The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place of allegiance. And this evening, the invocation will be given by Mr. Fairchild. And before we do that, I'd just like to have a moment of silence, unfortunately, for our pastor, Hens Coats, who was the pastor, or was the pastor, of Pleasant Green Baptist Church out in Trotwood. Okay, thank you, Ms. Fairchild.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The prayer for this evening comes from the Book of Common Prayer, so thanks to our Anglican brothers and sisters for these prayers. Oh Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves, and a blessing to other nations of the earth. Send down upon those who hold office in this city, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices, to promote the well-being of all people. Grant, oh God, that your holy and life-giving spirit may so move every human heart, and especially the hearts of the people of this land, that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease, that our divisions being healed, we may live in justice and peace. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kamis Blackshear, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion then to approve the minutes?
So moved, John.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the meeting, was that March 12th meeting? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You need to excuse Commissioner Joseph.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion then to approve Commissioner Joseph from this evening's meeting.
So moved.
And second that motion.
Okay. Then probably moved and seconded to approve Commissioner Joseph from this evening's meeting. He's away on work, so thank you very much. Communication petitions, any?
There are none.
There are none? No presentations? And, do we have any deletions or comments for the calendar?
Item number eight on tonight's agenda, resolution number 6853-25. There was a typing error, so the resolution number should be 6854-25. That is all I have.
And you'll correct that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dixing, additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this evening's calendar. I would only like to highlight one item, that is a construction contract, item number two, with Branstetter Carroll, Inc., to award of contract for about $320,000. This is an investment brought forward by the Dayton Recovery Plan, particularly looking at our spray park upgrades and expansions. You will recall, in July of '24, we did an RFP to first identify a firm to do an assessment and a design review, so that we had good detailed intelligence with regards to our spray parks and what kinds of upgrades would be necessary. BCI was selected as, out of three proposals, with the highest score, and so they will do an assessment and design. They will also support or oversee the construction management of the next phase where we will solicit the construction services from other vendors. So excited to see this opportunity coming forward. We know that our spray parks are heavily used.
Heavily used.
Solicited in the city, and so we're excited to bring this investment to you tonight.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, I've been tempted to use them myself sometimes this past summer, we had some hot days. Okay. So, then do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
There are none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, comments on calendar items?
I don't have any. Thank you, Your Honor.
None.
Okay. Okay, then, may I have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations?
I move to approve the city manager's recommendation.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you. Legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading, emergency resolution number 6852-25, authorizing the city manager to accept funding from the Montgomery County Economic Development Government Equity Program, as approved by the Board of County Commissioners, in an amount not to exceed $500,000 and zero cents, by entering into a project agreement for the Sierra Nevada Corporation Project, and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of resolution number 6852-25.
And I second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded then to have resolution number 6852-25 declare an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6852-25, authorizing the city manager to accept funding from the Montgomery County Economic Development Government Equity Program, as approved by the Board of County Commissioners, in an amount not to exceed $500,000 and zero cents, by entering into a project agreement for the Sierra Nevada Corporation Project. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading, resolution number 6853-25, authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF, principal forgiveness loan agreement, on behalf of the city of Dayton, Ohio, for the water reclamation facility, PFOA/PFAAS sampling project, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, being declared as an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of emergency resolution number 6853-25.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to have resolution number 6653-25 declare an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
No, I need to do the roll call.
Okay.
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading, ordinance number 32142-25, amending ordinance number 31853-20, as amended by ordinance number 32058-23, authorizing the creation of individual incentive districts for each phase of the housing development project within the Willow Hills Tax Increment Financing District, and approving related matters. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading, resolution number 6854-23, authorizing continuation of a $4.50 passenger facility charge at the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport. That is all.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Your Honor, four citizens have registered, and I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address this commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on, you will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience and attendants, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Cassidy Allen.
Stand in front. I'm sorry. No. Come on right here with me. Speaker to the mic. Say your name and your address, and then they'll get ready for you, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
You're good. You ready?
Yes.
I'm gonna use three minutes of them three minutes that you was gonna get. You ready?
Yes.
Go ahead. State your name and address.
Cassidy Allen, 641 Thornberry Drive, 45459, Dayton, Ohio.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Mims, city officials, and commissioners. It's such a huge honor to be here with you today. My name is Cassidy Allen, and I'm Miss Dayton Teen USA 2025. I'm reaching out because I'm looking for support in form of sponsorships for the ad showcase book. The contribution is $295 for a horizontal five-by-seven ad, and $395 for a vertical eight-by-eleven. This is such an exciting, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for me, and your support will allow me to reach my dreams while showcasing what an amazing community Dayton truly is. Community and giving back are really important to me, and they've always been a big part of my life. I've lived in Dayton my whole life and has shaped who I am today. I was Christianized at Tabernacle Church of God and Christ on Home Avenue by my late-grandfather, Kenneth Scriven, who was a former Dayton public schools teacher and coach. I've made so many special memories here, like walking to Madden Hill's library with my grandparents and getting involved in their summer reading program. I even got to participate in the ribbon-cutting of the new downtown Dayton Metro Library. I also went to Louise Joy as a preschooler and took my first swim lessons at Greater Dayton Recreation Center. Eventually, I moved on to Princeton and Loray Center for more advanced swim classes. As an elementary student, I joined the Dayton Girl Scout troop at Charity Adams Elementary School. One of my proudest moments was reciting the Pledge of Allegiance for the swearing-in of county recorder Brandon McLean, not just once, but twice. Furthermore, when I was nine, I submitted an article to Dayton Daily News, and it was published on their website. Another moment that stood out was when I was able to work with the legendary Bing Davis. I attended his summer art program for two years until COVID hit in 2020. I still have a piece of shrink art hanging inside of his studio, so it's kind of like a permanent reminder of that experience. Now, as a junior at Centerville High School, I am taking college courses at Wright State, but my love for Dayton has never gone away. I've been involved in Montgomery County Leadership Program in the Youth Works, and I graduated from the First Emerge Program at the Miami Valley Urban League, where I earned my natural hair certification from the state of Ohio. I've shadowed doctors and nurses through primary health job shadow program, and I'm also an active member of the Black Cultural Alliance at Centerville High School. I'm so excited for this journey, and your support means the world to me. Thank you for your time.
You finished right on time.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna ask for a point of personal privilege from my colleagues, and have opportunity to just ask you a question or two. Wish you would have been in the presentation section, but we have the right to sort of move that if they will agree. I'm sure they will. I was gonna ask you, what did you do to receive the recognition, but you gave us a good little outline in your presentation, so that's very rewarding for us to hear that. And I'm sure you've accomplished much more than just what you read to us. But I do want to give my commissioners a chance to ask a question or two of you as well, and so if you don't mind, staying there for a little bit longer?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Turner Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Now, I apologize, I missed it. You are Miss?
Dayton Teen USA.
Miss Dayton Teen USA, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That is a tremendous recognition and honor. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you wouldn't mind leaving us some information, so that we can revisit your request in regards to your ad request, if you wouldn't mind passing that to Ms. Blackshear, we can definitely take a look at that. And from the information that you provided us this evening, you have an impressive resume that is still growing and developing, so all the best to you, and congratulations. And Mom and Dad, they are here, I assume?
Yes.
See Dad with the camera, if you wouldn't mind standing up, just to be recognized. Mom, please. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Allen. Congratulations, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, Ms. Allen, congratulations, and thank you for sharing some of your accomplishments. And as you read through there, just warmed my heart to hear all the Dayton places that we love, Bing Davis, Charity Adams, Sinclair, Loray, Princeton, so I'm so glad that you have been, oh, and most importantly, Tabernacle Church, you know, such a pillar of our unity. I'm curious, is there an opportunity to become Miss Ohio Teen USA?
Yes.
And when does that process begin, and when will you know?
So, May 23rd and the 24th is the weekend of the pageant. I will be practicing and getting ready for the pageant throughout April, and I have my first meeting with Procter Productions, which is the company that is essentially broadcasting the pageant on television, so that happens on April 27th. And as of now, I am officially Miss Dayton Teen USA.
All right. Okay. And is there a talent component of that, and if so, what is your talent?
No, there is not a talent sector within the pageant. The pageant makes up three parts, so there's a fitness, which is, it's more like a routine. I will be sporting leggings and activewear and gym shoes, and then the next component is an interview with the judges, where I'll have a profile form that they'll be able to see, and they'll ask me questions based off of the information I provided. And the last event is the evening gown, where we'll be going out on stage and have voters at home pick who they believe should win what reward, sorry.
Well, it sounds like quite a bit of work ahead of you, and we wish you all the best, and congratulations on becoming Miss Dayton Teen USA.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, likewise, congratulations. My daughter was in a variety of pageants and won a few, so I know the work that it takes to earn these accolades, and I see your parents back there beaming, reminding me of the days when I used to do that, especially your father, so I do understand that smile. So just congratulations, it sounds like you're well on your way, you're very poised, and just keep up the good work and represent Dayton well.
Thank you, I will continue to represent Dayton.
All right.
Okay, again, congratulations. I used to work with your grandfather, and my son went to school with some of his siblings as well. So again, thank you so much for what you've done, and again, the congratulations prematurely, because we know you're gonna win. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
You name an address for the record.
Yes. My name is Max Abigail Bowman, I live just outside of West Dayton.
A little in the mic, please, thank you.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. I can repeat that?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Max Abigail Bowman, and I live just outside of West Dayton. So, I'm here, like many others, before me, to implore you to pull Dayton's involvement in aiding Israel's arms production. Stop granting funds from the Byrd Foundation to local businesses, dissolve DRETIA, do anything and everything in your power to ease our conscience. We feel powerless, and please, pull Dayton's participation in overseas weapons productions. It has allowed devastating airstrikes against over 1,000 people in the last two days alone. The latest break in the ceasefire in Israel and Gaza was not a move for peace, and our money is on the wrong side. I would also like to ask that you incentivize local businesses, universities, and other establishments to convert to using family restrooms. Separating bathrooms based on a biological sex has never been efficient. I'm sure you've all seen lines out the door in the women's restroom while male-designated restrooms go empty. Many women, in fact, will divert and use non-designated restrooms for them, so separating it by gender is not efficient. And finally, we need to protect our immigrants in our community. The recent detaining of local and national community members is simply abhorrent. Children and parents are scared the others will disappear without a word, and our immigrant community is enriching our region. We need to protect them. I mentioned earlier that we feel powerless in these matters while you guys have power, and I request that you wield it. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
Alec Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Alec Johnson, I live at 4822 Hassan Circle in Dayton, Ohio. I speak for the Party for Socialism and Liberation, PSL. As we speak, Israel has resumed full-scale war on Gaza, using its US-supplied arsenal. Already over 400 people were murdered by Israeli airstrikes in the opening hours of this new phase, and the attacks are ongoing. This breaks two months of ceasefire. Now Israel is saying it will open the gates of hell, as Trump and Netanyahu seek to force Palestinians from Gaza to carry out their twisted fantasy of turning it into luxury real estate owned by the US. Israel's genocide in Gaza has been made possible with massive amounts of US taxpayer money, but here in Dayton, Netanyahu's Gates of Hell project enjoys the active cooperation of Montgomery County and the city of Dayton, both of which relentlessly support the Dayton Regional Israeli Trade Association, or DRETIA. And there's more. Congressman Mike Turner, sorry, lost my page. Congressman Mike Turner is hard at work bringing NATO to our city in May, in the form of a parliamentary assembly, dishonestly framing NATO as a bastion of democracy, while a necessary public relations stunt cannot long hide NATO's true nature. Far from promoting democracy, NATO ensures that NATO citizens exert no electoral influence over existential decisions like war and peace. Not very democratic, yet somehow very familiar, right? Much more significantly is NATO's shameless, unflinching support and massive complicity with Israelis' genocide in Gaza now freshly reignited. NATO is a sock puppet for US imperial adventurism. This won't change even as NATO gets bullied by Trump and Truth Social posts from time to time. Embracing NATO and DRETIA are profoundly undemocratic projects, unworthy of support, particularly when democracy itself is now in a crisis of historic proportions. Nothing illustrates this crisis more than what's happened to Mahmoud Khalil at Columbia University in New York City. Mahmoud Khalil is a green card-holding, permanent resident married to a US citizen who is eight months pregnant. As a green card holder, Mahmoud Khalil should enjoy the same rights under the Constitution that full US citizens do, but no longer. Secretary of State Marco Rubio dusted off a statute created for use 72 years ago at the height of the Red Scare, and he claims allows him to ignore not only Mahmoud's First Amendment rights, but to arrest Mahmoud Khalil in front of his panicked wife, and whisk him into a detention facility in Louisiana with the hopes of deporting him permanently. I cannot stress enough that what can be done to Mahmoud Khalil today can be done to any one of us tomorrow, any one of us tomorrow. We must, each of us, resist this with every atom of our being, and insist that our elected officials do so also. Instead of supporting DRETIA and NATO, I think this commission should support democracy and stand solidly in support of Mahmoud Khalil joining the millions across the country and calling for his release and the end of genocide in Gaza.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Sonia Higgins.
Evening.
I'm Sonia Higgins, I live at 450 Lorenz Avenue in Dayton. I am dealing with a situation now that they're calling gang stalking, where they're using advanced technology, and they're tapping into Wi-Fi, smart TVs, and they're actually using electronic weapons on me. I have MS and epilepsy, and they are literally causing seizures. I don't have a history of drug use, no criminal background, nor do I have, you know, any situations that happen. I can think of one where I had a run-in with the neighbor, the son and daughter, well, I thought they were son and daughter, but they actually pulled a gun out on the sidewalk and threatened me. It started on Easter, and from then through the summer. Imagine waking up, knowing that you were drugged, and, you know, not having a history of drug use, you know something is going on with you, and then all of a sudden, you're just hearing voices all around you. So I found out through research, it's called gang stalking, and they're doing this to stalk single women out of their homes in Westwood, because the properties are cheap. They mention things, these kids have ADHD, they're working for somebody higher up, and they've mentioned psyche homes, psyche program, you know, and I don't know what these things are, but they are bothering me 24 hours a day, it's like they're working shifts. So I was reading, and I saw, well, it's pretty much happening in areas where there are military bases, this is how they can get ahold, I don't know how, but I'm just wondering if someone can help me, or at least look into it, because I was actually hospitalized over three months' time, three different times, and put in a mental facility, and diagnosed with a general diagnosis of psychosis, because they know I don't have a mental illness, but I am hearing voices. So they know something's going on. And me, as a woman with a disability, wanting to get back to work, is kind of backing me into a corner, as far as what I can do with a mental illness diagnosis. So I did send you a message, I found out later that that was sent, that there was somebody that does your Facebook page, so I didn't get a response, but I also sent an email to the governor, because I feel this is very serious, especially in West Dayton, where we're trying to build it up. So if you're stalking us out of our homes, you know, it's crazy, they attack my legs to the point where when I get up in the morning, I can barely walk. When I was diagnosed in 2020, he said, "You've had MS probably 20 years, but you're doing great, you're walking." I'm bent over now.
Okay. Would you please leave information with a member of our staff?
Okay.
Okay, they'll be in contact with you. They see you, they're sitting right there.
Okay, well.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins.
That is all, Your Honor.
That's all? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So, Ms. Dixing, do you have any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do you have any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, closing comments. Commissioner Turner Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Brought to you by Ms. Reed, just want to encourage everyone to participate in the Seeing Out Loud Dayton Returns for the second year on Thursday, March 20th, at 7:30 PM, uniting the community in celebration Supporting Culture Works campaign. And the event will be held at the Roger Glass Center for the Arts, the address is 29 Creative Way, Dayton, Ohio, and the tickets are free, but registration is in fact required, and I would imagine, Ms. Reed, that they need to go to Culture Works so that they can in fact register for the event. Thank you, Ms. Reed. And then last but certainly not least, our very own Dayton Children's Water Festival will be held on May 14th at UD. It's an annual education field trip that allows fourth-grade students to engage in interactive presentations, and if they wouldn't mind sharing volunteers, rather, excuse me, can sign up by April 4th at DaytonWaterfest.com/volunteers. can sign up by April 4th at DaytonWaterfest.com/volunteers, and I'm sure you can also find that link on the city's homepage, City of Dayton's homepage as well, so please, by all means, we need some volunteers. And then I would like to thank Ms. Allen and her family, thank you all for coming out this evening, all the best to you and your endeavor, and to Max Abigail Bowman, Mr. Alex Johnson, and Sonia Hagens, thank you for coming this evening, thank you for your comments, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Beer Chau.
Yeah, I would echo your thanks for assistance who have come and spoken tonight. I appreciate your participation, and again, congratulations to Ms. Allen, and good luck. And I want to thank all of those responsible for the big hoopla, big success over the weekend. Thank you to President Edwards out at Wright State, who committed 12 scholarships for the STEM winners on Sunday, which is life-transforming for those students who won those, but thanks to all of our staff who have, behind the scenes, been a part of that to make that a great success, not only for our community, but for all our guests, and all the way down to the police escorts that bring the teams in and show them great respect and appreciation. And I want to encourage people to participate on April 5th at the Block by Block Neighborhood Workshop, that'll be at Westwood, 8:30 to 1:30, don't have the time right? Yeah, so encourage people to come out for that great opportunity. So, thank you.
Yeah, the STEM program was tremendous this past Sunday, I attended as well, so, yeah, a lot of great engineers, young ones in this space. Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Absolutely. I would like you to join the City of Dayton's Human Relations Council on March 26th from 12 to 1 for a free bidding 101 webinar to help small businesses compete for city contracts. You can learn how to find bids, navigate the procurement process, and leverage the Procurement Enhancement Plan to secure opportunities for your business. This is just a great opportunity and a chance to connect with city experts and strengthen your business, and you can RSVP online for that. Also, I'm excited to announce that we'll be hosting the Day at D-A-Y on March 28th in collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club, our rec centers, the Dayton Airport, local universities, and AIRCAMP, where we're giving Dayton youth a hands-on experience in the aviation industry. This is just very important as we kind of build up this aviation ecosystem and pipeline. So it's a great opportunity to inspire future careers in aviation, so we look forward to seeing you. This is gonna be an ongoing thing, so you'll be hearing me talk about this all throughout the summer, and hopefully until the fall, as we want to really stand this great opportunity up for exposure for our young people.
Okay, that's it. Okay, thank you. So just wanted to mention that last year this time, thinking we were standing around waiting for the results of the passage of issue six, the 19th of March, 2024, and successfully we were given that nod by the citizens of Dayton by 71% to let us know that the renewal that they were passing was an indication that they were at least happy with the progress for passing the issue in 2016. And it allowed us to do some of the great work that was mentioned today in our work session, dealing with all the great things that continue to be happening as far as Dayton is concerned. So I just wanted to bring that note to all of us, to make sure, a little moment in history, so just we recognize just how important that was to have a renewal of another $15 million for another eight years to move into the spaces that we continue to move in to recover from some of the challenges that we've experienced over the last five, six decades. So again, thank you to this community for giving us trust and confidence relative to that. And then to thank Commissioner Turner Sloss, because I had forgotten on tomorrow about the Culture Works program until she mentioned that, because I am going to be playing in the percussion session tomorrow with the band. Now, I mentioned to you before that the good Lord took my voice away, so I'm not a singer, okay, but He did leave me with the skills to play drums, so I will be doing that tomorrow. I think the program starts at 7 o'clock, and as was mentioned, it's free, so if you want to come in and watch, and I hope I add value to the program, and give me a thumbs up, of course, if you will. But thank you so much for what you're doing, Culture Works, because they're trying to put more emphasis and more attention to the arts, because they mean so much to this community. And it's a mind-expansion program, it helps to show more and more young people that they have value, and it gives them just another insulation for some of the crazy things that we can't control that they all sometimes come in contact with. And with that, love and peace for all, and hatred for none, this meeting is adjourned.